Hi, good evening. I'm Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain and welcome to the Kalamazoo City Commission Meeting of Monday, March 15, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on the City of Kalamazoo's Facebook page as well as the City of Kalamazoo's YouTube channel. You can also listen to the meeting live on the telephone by calling area code 269-552-6425 and entering meeting ID number 938-1545-4292 when prompted. And you can also leave a public comment for tonight by calling area code 269-226-6573. And like to turn tonight's meeting over to Kalamazoo Mayor David Anderson.
Thank you Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. I appreciate it. I want to offer a warm welcome to everybody on this cool spring night as we open our public Zoom meeting for Monday, March 15, 2021. Clerk Borling, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here in the great city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Hess.
Here in the blustery city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Knott.
Here at Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present in the city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Urban.
Here in Kalamazoo.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Here in Kalamazoo.
Mayor Anderson.
Here in Kalamazoo. Tonight for our opening ceremony, we are honored to have Dr. Addis Moore from Mount Zion Baptist Church here for the invocation. Dr. Moore.
Well, we thank you now for this day, another opportunity to enjoy the provisions in which you provide us life, health, and strength. And tonight going on this occasion, we thank you for this city commission. Thank you for Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Griffin, our manager Ritzman, and all the city commissioners and those that will guide our city. We pray tonight now particular for their strength, their families, their health, and their prosperity as they have given themselves in service to others. Lead and guide them with only you, what only you can do, your wisdom. You said if we need to wisdom, let us ask you and you would give it unobrated. So thank you now for wisdom tonight. Thank you for the insight in which you will give them. But thank you that you don't give them the spirit of fear. You gave them, give them power, love, and a sound mind. And they operate now on the behalf of the city. We trust you as you lead them that they will do best, what's best for Kalamazoo. So we give them to you today, your wisdom, your insight, and the courage now to do what they must do and then stand and having an altar stand will stand. So we love you and we honor you now. It is in the precious name of Jesus. We pray and ask all things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Moore. It's an honor to have you with us here tonight. And I know you're going to stick around for a minute here because we're all going to get to participate in celebrating quite an accomplishment here in Kalamazoo. And we will start with our proclamations. Commissioner Hess, you have our first proclamation.
I do, and it is my great honor and pleasure to present this proclamation to Mount Zion Baptist Church on its 100th year anniversary. Whereas, Mount Zion Church was formally organized March 6, 1921 at Painter's Hall on Main Street with a few devoted followers. And whereas, for 100 years, Mount Zion has been a pillar of the Kalamazoo community, committed to not being the best church in the community, but the best church for the community, demonstrated through the initiation of outreach programs such as Safe House, Pride Place, The Scout House, Family Institute, Parenting Classes, Northside Little League, and the Senior Ecumenical Center in joint partnership with St. Augustine Catholic Church. And whereas, Mount Zion's vision for Kalamazoo is a vibrant community living by faith, strives to achieve this vision through its mission of empowering people to transform themselves in the community. And whereas, Mount Zion provides leadership in the teaching and preaching of the Word of God for the benefit of the community. The church also leads the community in calls for action in the equitable treatment of all by hosting and leading community forums, demonstrations, workshops, and most recently as a clinic site for COVID-19 vaccinations. And whereas, Mount Zion has become a major referral agency to assist community members in meeting their basic needs through its benevolence and cares ministries, operates seeds preschool for three and four-year-olds, and a learning hub for students impacted by the pandemic. And whereas, Mount Zion contributes to economic stability of the community by employing 20 employees, operation of the Living Well Bookstore and Mount Zion Bookstore. Now therefore, I, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, and members of the 53rd City Commission, do hereby recognize Mount Zion Baptist Church for 100 years of service in the city and extend gratitude for its longevity and positive influence in the Kalamazoo as well as in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Pastor Moore, anything you'd like to say?
On the behalf of the membership of Mount Zion, current membership and all those in which shoulders we stand upon, we humbly receive this proclamation and say thank you so very much. And want to thank the city for actually for being a partner in what we do and willing to hear, listening, and share as we do the vision that God has called us to do. So on behalf of the Mount Zion membership, we thank you.
Thank you so much, and we all look forward to other 100 years working together. So thank you for being here with us. Appreciate it. And thank you, Commissioner Hess, for reading that. Commissioner Pradel, I believe that you have a proclamation you're going to be reading this evening.
Yes, Your Honor. So we have a proclamation tonight celebrating the 19th Annual March for Meals Month. And we're joined tonight by Abby Finn from Senior Services of Southwest Michigan. So whereas 2021's observance of March for Meals celebrates 19 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs and deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And Meals on Wheels program, both congregate and home-delivered, in the city of Kalamazoo have been served admirably for over 50 years. Volunteers, whereas volunteers for the Meals for Wheels program in Kalamazoo are the backbone of the program, and they have not only delivered nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are significantly at risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention for their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kalamazoo provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the city and help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary fall hospitalizations and premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kalamazoo provide a powerful opportunity for social connections for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas the Meals on Wheels programs in Kalamazoo observe the and recognize the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-19 pandemic, and will continue to provide to local communities, our state and the nation, long after it's over. Now therefore, I, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, and members of the 53rd City Commission, do hereby recognize March 2021 as the 19th Annual March for Meals Month.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pradel. Ms. Finn.
Thank you very much. One of the last things I remember doing in person last year was coming down to the city commission meeting last March. Things really rapidly changed for us from there. We had to cancel our recognition event last year for our volunteers, just because we weren't really sure what would be safe. So we are taking it all online this year. We're going to be recognizing our volunteers and giving them back, giving back to them. We've seen about a 25% increase in new clients in demand for services, have expanded some of our local partnerships to delivering some supplemental food boxes, quarantine boxes, toilet paper, pet food, things like that. So we're just really trying to continue to fill those gaps because we know this need is going to persist long beyond COVID. So I really appreciate your guys' time and recognition for this. And I believe we send out and will send a reminder, if you can send a thank you video to our volunteers, we're trying to put that together for them, just to kind of really shout them out. It's been a tough year. They've run some long routes for us. So we really appreciate all that they do. And thank you.
Thank you so much for being here with us, longstanding and well-recognized nonprofit activity that occurs. And we really, really appreciate it. We know what a difference it makes. So thank you so much. I want to make sure that all the volunteers understand that we recognize that and appreciate their efforts. So thank you for being here. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes Commissioners would like to see? See no changes. Next item is Communications. Manager Ritzma.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Public hearings. I would now like to open a public hearing to receive comments on an ordinance to temporarily suspend. Let me see. So I'm sorry, I'm just interrupting myself here, but our public comments are going to be coming after this. Is that correct, Deputy City Manager? Okay.
Yes, we'll have public comments for any that came in for the public hearing. And then after that, we'll have any general public comments.
Okay, good deal. Just to make sure we weren't missing those as we're starting a hearing here. So I would now like to open a public hearing to receive comments on an ordinance to temporarily suspend the required minimum off-street parking requirements of Section 50-7.2, required vehicular off-street parking spaces through November 1, 2021. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
All right. I don't believe so.
Right. See none then. Is there a motion? To open this public hearing?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Knott. Discussion. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, are there any public comments on this item?
No, sir. There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. I'd now like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance is, well, we just made the motion. So there we go. Sorry, I jumped the gun on that. Any further discussion? All right, see none. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next is an opportunity for general public comments. And Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain, do we have any comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we do have a few that have come in, and we'll begin playing those right now.
Hi, this is Casey Coker. I am a Kalamazoo City resident. I live in the Stewart neighborhood. I'm calling to see where things are with the transparency and consequences related to Manager Ritzma. I've been following this and I'm curious as to where we are with the transparency and the dishonesty with the community. And so wanting things to be, wanting folks to be held accountable and continue transparency so we can improve trust. So I look forward to having a continued conversation with you about where we move from here in terms of the city manager Ritzma and how we will continue to promote honesty, integrity, and transparency in our government.
Hello, my name is Matt Smith. I'm a resident of the Vine neighborhood in the city of Kalamazoo. I'm calling in support of the allocation of monies to people experiencing homelessness at the hotel and in support of the great organizations trying to help the people, including Open Doors, helping other people exceed through navigation, momentum, and other orgs. And I want to urge all the people who essentially run the city, not who's including the city commissioner mayor, but not only them people, to push this community towards a housing-first model of homelessness, which doesn't tolerate homeless people living outside and has enough permanent supportive apartments so that homeless people actually have permanent supportive housing, which is the solution to homelessness. It's 82% successful. I look forward to Kalamazoo becoming a housing-first model, which is going to include people not writing checks for a couple hundred thousand dollars, but rather writing checks for tens of millions of dollars so that we can end homelessness in our lifetime in Kalamazoo. Thank you.
This is Ray Swinney calling. I'm living in the city of Kalamazoo. I didn't prepare anything formally to present to you, but I was just moved as I've listened to you recently to call. And thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing. You have had a heavy week with meetings on Saturday and then all day today, or a lot of today. And I think we need to express our appreciation for the time and the diligence you're putting in. In fact, my thanks go beyond that to the city and the city civil servants in the city that are serving the public so well. I'd like to also extend my thanks to Jeff Messer. Jeff Messer, I've watched him at the commission meetings previously, and he seems to be like an unpaid city staff member connecting people who may have complained with city civil servants that might be able to address their problems. And in particular, Jeff has watched out for the fate of a friend of mine who was living on the edge in a house that he sort of inherited. And he was in arrears in his property taxes. And Jeff pointed this out, and so we were able to intervene and get the taxes paid just before they were due. But also, Jeff alerted us to the possibility of exemption for poverty. And so a lot of people, Jeff included, I have a hard time getting in touch with you in these meetings because of limited access to technology. And so I remember not too long ago, a couple summers ago, when there was an encampment on your doorstep. And I remember the comments of a person there that said, there's not a day that I don't consider suicide. And so I'm so happy that you have been able to address some of the issues. And you'll be approving funds for the hotel initiative. And I know that not everybody is able to get in there that might have been able to, wanted to. But it's a start. I'm reminded of a prayer, and I'd like to read some of it. It's so by our bishop here in Detroit, who was serving beer in Detroit. This is what we are about. We plant the seeds that one day will grow. We water slay foundations that will need further development. We provide yeast that produces effects for beyond our capabilities. We cannot do everything, but there's a sense of liberation in realizing that. This enables us to do something and to do it very well.
Yes, I'd like to thank Jim Ritzma for offering his resignation, and I encourage everyone to vote to accept it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marie. I live in the block between North Church Street and North Park. And I'm calling about the littering problem throughout the north side. I called the city last week and this week and got two different responses. And I would like clarity on whether a citizen can call if their street is so littered up that the street cleaner can come down and take care of it. I got a no last week and a yes this week. So I'd like clarity on that. And I'm just really, I'm at my wit's ends with the littering and how trashy the north side of Kalamazoo looks. There's trash and litter everywhere. People just litter up and down this street. Earlier today, I went out and picked up trash that was along the curb alongside the side of the street that I reside on. There's still litter out there. There's some property owned by the land bank. I did call them to see if they could come pick up their trash that's on their property. I know it's not anyone's fault, but it is within the city. And I just think that there need to be some kind of campaign to stop this littering. This is really out of control. And the north side just looks so trashy. I mean, the NACD, they're building new homes, you know, but it's like planting flowers in the dump. I mean, I wish their stretch would go further than just the purview of the NACD building and get some kind of littering campaign going. I'm trying to do the best I can in my block. I'm going to buy some please stop littering signs to see maybe if that helps. You know, I don't litter. I wasn't brought up like that. You know, the commercial with the Indian guy with a tear coming down his eyes for littering, that's just almost how I feel because it's just terrible. And it needs, something needs to be done before, you know, you try to build up an area of town and you just got it, and it just looks trashy. I just hope that this just isn't a passing thought, but that there can be some kind of program or something to try to push to stop the littering. And I'd appreciate if you guys would look into that and see what can be done. Thank you very much. Bye.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jeff Chamberlain, Deputy City Manager. That was our last public comment received.
Thank you, DCM Chamberlain. I appreciate that. Next is the consent agenda. City Manager Ritzma.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Jim Ritzma. We have 10 items on the consent agenda. The first nine are for action, and the 10th one is to be held until April 5, 2021. First is the approval of a one-year contract extension with PVS Knollwood Chemicals Incorporated for the purchase of fluorocytic acid in the amount of $106,500. Next is the authorization for the city manager to enter into contracts with ice control salt suppliers as awarded by the State of Michigan for the 2021-2022 winter season requirements in an amount not to exceed $500,000. Next is the approval of the purchase of 11 Public Safety Fleet vehicles from Gorno Ford through the MyDeal purchasing program in the amount of $417,054. Next is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2021 Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application for the Kalamazoo River Valley Trail amenities at the Kalamazoo Farmers Market and committing the city of Kalamazoo to a local match of $500,000, which will be provided through an Irving S. Gilmore Foundation grant. Next is the approval of the proposed 40-year Water Services Agreement with local townships and a village, which equalizes rates between in-city and out-city water customers and establishes a formal collaborative platform for issues pertaining to the regional water system. Next is the approval of an agreement with the Kalamazoo County Consolidated Dispatch Authority to place a public safety communications tower on property located at 2740 North Sixth Street in Ostromo Township. Next is the approval of an easement agreement for air rights associated with the Graphic Packaging International Project at Harrison Street. Next is the approval of the nomination of the following sector representatives for the Foundation for Excellence Board of Directors: the reappointment of Dr. Angela Graham Williams as Healthcare Stakeholder Director for a three-year term ending in 2024; the reappointment of Barbara Miller as a Neighborhood Stakeholder Director for a three-year term ending in 2024; and the reappointment of Von Washington Jr. as Education Stakeholder Director for a three-year term ending in 2024. The following are approval of the appointments to boards and commissions. And the first one are for, or the first few are for Community Development Act Advisory Committee, which I'll refer to as CDAC since there are so many. First is the appointment of Tiffany Burns to the community, or CDAC, as the East Side Neighborhood Representative for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. Next is the appointment of Betsy Farner to CDAC as an at-large member for a term expiring March 31, 2024. Next is the appointment of Caitlin Kuhn to CDAC as an at-large member for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. Next is the appointment of Chelsea Veer to the CDAC as an at-large member for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. Next is the appointment of Rachel Hughes-Nelson to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. And the next several are appointments to Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Organizing Committee, which I'll refer to as SPK. First is the appointment of Don Cooney to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2022. Next is the appointment of Ben Damra to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2023. Next is the appointment of Patrice Griffin to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2023. Next is the appointment of Kim Howlers to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. Next is the appointment of Bobby Hopewell to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. Next is the appointment of Brenda Hughes to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2022. Next is the appointment of Sakia Lee to the SPK Coordinating Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2023. Next is the appointment of Shalana Lewis to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2022. Next is the appointment of Carol McGlynn to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2023. Next is the appointment of Jonathan Polley to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. And finally, the appointment of Alyssa Stewart to the SPK Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2024. And the final action or item is adoption of a resolution vacating the Garden Street right-of-way adjacent to 924 Russell Street.
Thank you very much, City Manager Ritzma. I appreciate that. So Commissioners, the requested action is to approve items 1 through 9 and postpone item 10 until April 5, 2022, and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cunningham, supported by Commissioner Hess.
And with a correction that we postponed until April 5, 2021.
Oops. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's not lose a year there, right? Clerk Borling, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. On our regular agenda, we have three items. For the first one, Manager Ritzma.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding with the United Way of the Battle Creek and Kalamazoo Region for a grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Foundation for Excellence 2020 Fiscal Year Fund Balance to support the Disaster Relief Fund and amend the FY 2021 budget accordingly and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yeah, I will turn it over to DCM Laura Lamb.
Thank you.
Deputy City Manager Lamb. Deputy City Manager Lamb?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners. This is Laura Lamb, Deputy City Manager. Tonight, I have the honor to introduce this item for you for consideration. The recommendation before you is to approve a memorandum of understanding with the United Way for $250,000 to support the Disaster Relief Fund. This DRF grant in particular is intended to support individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness within the city of Kalamazoo. And even specifically beyond that, looking at a hotel intervention for the next three months involving up to 90 rooms for residents living in encampments in our area. I'd like to introduce several community partners that have joined us this evening to provide an overview of the hotel intervention project. Our partners can also speak to other efforts underway to assist our broader community that does not have a safe place to call home besides those living in encampments. We have several representatives tonight from Open Doors. This is the agency leading the hotel intervention. Stephanie Hoffman is here, Executive Director, Tiffany White, Deputy Director, and Erica Brown, a Pathway Home Manager. We also have Gwendolyn Hooker, founder and executive director of Helping Other People Exceed Through Navigation, and Sarah Jacobs, Continuum of Care Director with United Way. In addition to these core partners, we've had a lot of people involved in this effort. Jason Knight from Urban Alliance, who I don't believe is able to join us tonight, has been very active. Also want to acknowledge tireless efforts for the Kalamazoo Coalition for Homeless Volunteers, assisting with intake, moving efforts, gathering supplies, helping with meals. Also want to acknowledge the work of Kalamazoo County and our partners there and their increasing role in exploring housing solutions across the continuum. I'm gonna pause it there, turn it over to our partners to kind of go through some details and then certainly I will be available and happy to help questions at the conclusion.
Thank you, DCM Lamb. Director Huffman, are you starting?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Thank you for having us. I've wanted to bring in new faces to the commission, and that is Erica Brown. She's our Pathway Home Manager. That's our new initiative that we are working on with KNHS to move families from homelessness to homeownership. So we're really excited about that. And I also want to introduce our Deputy Director, Dr. Tiffany White, who has been instrumental in getting this off the ground and putting policies in place. So first, let me say we could not do this without the entire community's support. One thing that we know is that the housing crisis that we are suffering here in Kalamazoo County, it didn't, it didn't just start with the pandemic, right? We were already experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity for working families and people with no income years ago. What I am encouraged about with this initiative is the amount of support that we have, not only from our housing sector, nonprofit sector, but from city and county government and philanthropy. There has never been a time since I've been at Kalamazoo over 20 years that I've seen this kind of synergy working and happening. And so I'm really, really excited to be a part of this project. Here's the deal. People need somewhere to stay. People are suffering. And so when the call came out and we were in a big meeting, we felt we had no choice but to step up because, one, we don't want people living on contaminated land for much longer and we don't want people located in a floodplain. And so with that, we put the ask out to the, to the entire continuum of care. Will we have your support as we do this work together? And the answer was yes. And so I'm going to give Erica and Tiffany a chance to speak on the process and how it has gone. Dr. White, please step in. And Erica, I would love for you to talk a bit about Pathway Home.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you for welcoming us here today, Laura and the board, the Commissioners. This experience has been really incredible because it was just shocking to me about the number of organizations that stepped up to make this happen, this hoteling intervention happen. And while two months have already been funded, or one and a half months have already been funded, we could really use the additional support. So I thank you for, the city of Kalamazoo, for considering providing another month of funding so we can get through May 31st. The most impactful thing to me has been, yes, we're serving a great number of community members and moving them from contaminated land and on floodplains, but is seeing people's faces because that's not usually what I do. I'm behind the scenes, moving papers and entering policy and financials and things. But in this regard, we've needed everybody to step up and help out. And it's been a huge initiative from all over Kalamazoo to provide this support. And I just wanted to share one story that was really impactful to me. There was a woman who was 21 weeks pregnant and her partner, her fiance, and they kept coming back to the hotel because we were feeding them, giving them meals, even though there was no room for them in the hotel yet. There were, it's, it's a great initiative and it makes a huge dent in the problem, but the problem is bigger. And so they kept coming back and kept coming back and we kept giving them food from many of the donations that were provided across the community. But, and finally, they were able to get into our hoteling intervention program. And I'm just grateful that they're there. Another person just received a job and she was able to get into, a single woman was able to get into the hoteling intervention and she's changing her life because of it. She's not the only one. Another woman who brought me a whole staff of papers and it's like, look what I'm doing. I'm gonna change my, my life. I've got all of these applications and things that I'm going to do to break down the barriers for myself, along with the programming team that Hope Through Navigation and Gwendolyn Hooker and Jason Knight from ISK were, are supporting and many other organizations. And many other organizations, those aren't the only two, but those are our primary partners. So it was very impactful and I just encourage you to vote yes on spending money in this way to support our unhoused community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. Hi. Yes, Ms. Brown?
Sorry, I got excited. Hello, everyone. My name is Erica Brown. I'm super excited to share space with you all and tell you a little bit about our new program at Open Doors called Pathway Home. So one of the really cool things about Open Doors is we were founded almost 51 years ago from a group of deacons who decided to step outside of the pool pit and into our community to get to know community members and see how they could be of service. And as a result of relationship building and getting to hear what the community needed, we started our program, which started off as a latchkey kid program and then turned into shelter. And so over the last 50 years, we have continued building relationships and we have continued creating programs based on what community members needed. And so from the shelter, we branched out a little bit and we started doing affordable housing. And the key piece to the affordable housing was the supportive services. And in supportive services, we get to know those people that we serve. So we start off with basic questions. How are you? How has your day been? Tell me a little bit about yourself. Tell me what we can do to assist you in your process of change. Tell me what you need and we will see what we can do, not to solve your problems, but to partner with you as you create change in your life. And so from there, again, hearing what our community members needed, people want to own homes in Kalamazoo. And so we have begun to create a program that is based in intentionality, that is based in authenticity to give individuals in our community a chance at homeownership, a chance at building wealth, a chance at breaking generational curses, breaking generational poverty, to do something different, to get something different. And so one of the most magnificent pieces of Open Doors is that we not only heard community members, but we saw community members. We saw community members when they were at Bronson Park. We saw community members when they were at the encampment site on Mills. And so this time, we didn't have to ask what they needed, we saw what they needed. And so Open Doors and some of the great community agencies have stepped up and showed up and showed out to say, you know what? We see you and we hear you and you matter. And so that's one of the key pieces. Our executive director all the time says, what comes from the heart reaches the heart. And the fact that a hotel was opened up and space was made intentionally for community members that had no roof over their head, that is powerful. People have said, I didn't know that you saw us. I didn't know that you heard us. And so this initiative is so important because in conjunction with Pathway Home and affordable housing, we are providing community members an opportunity to just settle down, to calm down in a safe space and to regroup, recollect and figure out what the next step is. So thank you so much for your willingness to hear us and take time out of your busy schedule to just allow us to share our voices and allow us to speak up for our community. So thank you so much.
I am so proud to work for Open Doors and have team people, team members like this. I want to give Gwendolyn Hooker, Executive Director of Hope Through Navigation, a bit, a bit of time to speak as well.
Ms. Hooker, yes?
Hello, hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, Deputy Director Lamb, City Managers and the community at large. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to come and raise hope. I am super excited to be a part of this initiative. This project has been transforming for a lot of folks already. We are one week, we are one week into this project. We just started, last Monday is the first day that we started checking people in. And we have already, you know, met folks, established relationships with people and figuring out what barriers can we break down to get folks to where they are trying to go. And we are very grateful to have your, your ears right now, to be able to encourage you to not only talk about equity and not only talk about solving the problem of moving folks from, I think Erica said, from the contaminated land in the floodplain, but also to somewhere where they're, they don't have to worry about where they're gonna sleep the next day, but they can actually worry about some other things like, you know, whether or not they want to get a job or do they need clothing or do they need ID? And those kinds of things are the things that, you know, that Hope Through Navigation are experts at providing full wraparound services. Folks may remember that we serve folks with criminal backgrounds and or substance use disorder history or that are, have a history of unhoused, being unhoused because of either of those two things. And so this put us smack dab in the middle of landing at the campsites and literally delivering services to folks while they were at the encampments. The opportunity presented itself for us to actually work with Open Doors and with Urban Alliance. And we were happy to jump in and fit in and do whatever we needed to do in order to make this project happen and to make it work as soon as we possibly could. This is probably one of the fastest projects that I've actually seen from start to finish in record time. And so we are very grateful. We did a lot of things without having the money to do it and that lands us in front of you today. We need you guys to open up those, those, those checkbooks and to ensure that the population that we have now housed and got into a, got into a situation where they can access our supportive services. We want to keep them with us for as long as we can. I believe Dr. White did say that we have funding for a month and a half and our goal is to keep them at the very least in our, in our, with us at the, at the hotel intervention at least until May 31st. And that would give us at least some time to start literally breaking down barriers and start tackling some of these core issues that we know that a lot of folks have. Also want to just remind you folks that we are building tiny houses for folks. We do have some contractors that we are offering the bids for and we are steadily working towards affordable housing for people that are coming home from incarceration or coming home from residential treatment. And definitely want to encourage people to remember that we have a problem and we need all, all hands on deck and we need all types of housing models available. And this is just a temporary solution. We know that we need long-term permanent housing for folks and we hope that this is a stepping stone to provide permanent housing to our friends going forward. Thank you so much and we are excited for next steps to come.
Deputy City Manager Lamb, anything else from staff on this then?
Nothing for me. Wanted to see if Continuum of Care Director Sarah Jacobs had anything to add or if we want to move it to questions.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or evening, rather. Thank you to the city commissioners for that time to speak. Again, my name is Sarah Jacobs. I am the Director for the Continuum of Care. I'm super proud of this collaboration between service providers, philanthropy, city and county government. It's been a huge lift and as you've heard from these agencies, it's not one thing that any one agency could have done alone. So it really does take our entire community and I'm just very proud to be a part of this collaboration. And so, I mean, I guess at this point, I think you've heard everything, but I am available to answer questions as well as those arise. But thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jacobs. Are there any questions at this time for staff or for our partners that are here with us tonight from Commissioners? Commissioner Hess?
I wonder who could address and, and tell us if there's staffing by your agencies at the hotel and what that might look like for the folks that are staying there.
This is Stephanie Hoffman from Open Doors. Yes, we have staff there 24/7. So the partner agency has a presence there at the hotel and we actually, Hope Through Navigation has really stepped up. They have two individuals that are actually staying at the hotel to ensure that we keep some level of stability, if, if you will, and Open Doors, we're there Monday through Friday and also have staff there on the weekend as well as Urban Alliance.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was being, being assisted. And I had another question for, I see Steve Brown is here from FFP. I wonder, Steve, if you could just say a word, a few words from the Foundation for Excellence about, about this request and about this motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. The Foundation for Excellence has an overall strategy that's really invested significant resources in the last several years in affordable housing across a kind of a portfolio of strategies from building and rehabbing single and multi-unit housing. This is really a crisis moment and pairs some of the thinking in that work with some of the COVID response, kind of fast mobilizing that we saw earlier this year and then brings together, as you've heard, this incredibly impressive and really make or break partnership that I haven't had the fortune, good fortune to work with. I really bear no credit in this, in this project, but we're delighted to support it and, and the partnership is really what makes it work. So bringing several threads together in this case, so it's on mission, it really supports the community, makes good use of the resources and, and moves ahead together with crucial partners in the community.
Thank you, Director Brown. Other questions for staff or partners from Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel?
Yeah, I'm not sure who might be equipped to answer this, but in terms of individuals that have resided in the encampments longitudinally, but also recently, I was curious if there's somewhat of a census in terms of identifying how many individuals have been houseless and what percentage of those individuals within the last year through the efforts that many of you have been making are now housed through either like the Knights Inn project or this hotel intervention?
I guess I can speak a little bit to that. So the Continuum of Care partners continually meet. This is, this is one intervention among many, really, within the Continuum of Care. Millions of dollars in federal and state resources are leveraged each year. And COC partners continue to serve across multiple areas, which include prevention, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing and outreach, outreach services, among many others. So there are several interventions that are So there are several interventions that are continually moving through. I know these partners here, Stephanie and Gwendolyn, can speak directly to the hoteling intervention and get you numbers on that specifically. So I don't know if one of you guys want to speak to that one specifically?
So Commissioner Pradel, I just want to clarity on your question. Are you asking how many people from the encampments are now housed at the hotel? Or are you asking how many people that were at the encampment are now in permanent supportive housing? Because I'm not, I'm not clear as to the question.
Yeah, sure. It could be either individuals. I'm just curious, you know, how many people through those two initiatives specifically are now housed that were otherwise not?
Yep, so for the hoteling, the hoteling project, and we're just calling it HIP, just because we love acronyms. There is right now, so there's 90 rooms at this particular hotel. And we have no vacancies. Some of those rooms are double. So we have at last count 107 folks. We are, we have three families currently that have in between two and four children. The vast majority of the folks that are there, demographically speaking, are Caucasian white men in the range of 30 to 55 years old. So we know that that doesn't encompass the full spectrum of our homeless population. We know that there are Hispanics and African-American folks that don't tend to go outside. So in regards to the overall amount of people that we have, that I can speak for Hope Through Navigation on this one, from the encampments, since it began, we have housed at least, we have found six permanent supportive housing for people outside of the hoteling initiative. And so what that essentially means that from folks that were at the encampment, they may have been spent some time at the hotel prior to our intervention, and they are now on to, you know, permanent supportive housing where they're, you know, they're basically connecting with our services, HRI Services, Urban Alliance. And I think one of them, actually, two of those clients are also clients that Open Doors and Hope Through Navigation share. So there's a lot of collaborations going on prior to this. We're just really strengthening our partnerships in a lot of areas. All of the partners that are doing this intervention already basically serve some intersection of the population. And so we're just happy that even though we kind of met in this regard, we do are happy to continue the work that we've been doing all along for many, many years.
Then Commissioner Pradel, you did ask about the Lodge, I believe, which was formerly the Knights Inn. And there are approximately, I believe it's 53 rooms that are in operation right now. And those house anywhere between, you know, anywhere between 50 and as much as I've heard, you know, 70, depending on, you know, you get turnover there and as people, you know, move into permanent housing and different things like that. So that does fluctuate.
So all told, I mean, between two and then the permanent housing solutions, I mean, 213, 16. So we're talking about about 160 some people who have been effectively housed who were otherwise not housed. It's pretty impressive. In terms of these initiatives and strategies, I mean, would you, would you consider this kind of the housing-first model at work? Kind of dabbing our foot in that model and seeing how, how the strategy works for our community?
I'm gonna, I know I don't want to put him on the spot, but I want to give the floor to Jason Knight because he is the person that really constantly enforces the housing-first model that we have incorporated. We are, we definitely are using a housing-first model and all across the board. So if Jason, do you want to weigh in on that? Since I feel like that's a question made for you.
I'm going to thank you, Ms. Hooker. I'm going to jump here in here just a second. So Jason Knight, who just joined us, if you could introduce yourself, is representing Urban Alliance, which is also one of the partners on this project. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, David. Yeah, I was at a previous engagement. So Jason Knight from Urban Alliance. The super excited that we had this project and that we're able to do it. This started from just doing outreach to now we're doing a hotel intervention. And the housing first, it is in my opinion, the housing first model, we're trying to do it as much as we can. You know, because it's the hierarchy of values before you can truly start working towards that goal of housing. You have to get that bottom layer done. So it takes work. My partners pushed me to be objective and I pushed them to be objective. So as much as possible, Chris, yes, we are trying to do a housing-first model. Even though this is a 90-day intervention and ideally with a true housing-first model, we'd be beyond the 90 days. But I think we are trying to incorporate housing first as much as possible.
Other questions for our community partners or staff? Vice Mayor Griffin?
This is Vice Mayor Griffin. I want to start by thanking all of the organizations who came together. I think probably one of the greatest achievements is that people who normally get overlooked and treated without dignity and respect are being treated with dignity and respect. And, you know, we've had a history in the city of Kalamazoo with respects to unhoused and our homeless and folks in housing crisis. So for that, I am extremely grateful. I did hear that from, from people who have been working with folks who are in the hoteling situation that they are, they feel hope and they feel happiness in a way that they hadn't felt before. So for that, you know, that's indescribable. I have to say, though, I am extremely conflicted by the ask not for the purposes of helping the unhoused community and not for the purposes of getting people off of toxic and contaminated land, but for the fact that this is an inequitable Band-Aid on a problem that has existed for quite some time. I'm very happy that Gwendolyn Hooker lifted up the demographics of who is unsheltered and who is in this encampment situation. Again, I don't want anyone to be unhoused, but the data, we have spent several years lifting up the data around who was homeless in our community. And in March, it's Women's History Month, and in a time of COVID, when the County of Kalamazoo has some of the highest numbers of homeless children, we created a $700,000 intervention that does not include them. And I want to tell you a story about a young woman who had enough money to stay at the Baymont on 11th Street as she was homeless. They asked her to move to the Cork Street location because they were preparing the hotel for renovations, which essentially was for this project here. She thankfully threw open door. Thank you, Stephanie. She was able to get somewhere. I have two other mothers, one timed out of the DV Shelter. She works in Kalamazoo, has a child. She's driving back and forth to sleep on someone's couch in Grand Rapids. She can't get into this intervention. Another mother who's having to choose between food and paying for a hotel, she is paying to stay at the Red Roof Inn right now, who can't get into this intervention. So my conflict is for the mothers and the families who we already knew were in toxic, unsafe situations. And because they were not visible to people, they did not get the same attention. And this is not a criticism to any of the organizations that are helping to provide services because someone needs to do it and it needs to be done with dignity. And I'm happy that every last one of these organizations are doing this work. But I am conflicted because the city said they wanted to be anti-racist and inclusive. And this is a $250,000 ask that we know primarily is assisting a certain demographic. Where is the ask alongside of it that's going to be open for everyone? Because these mothers and these families, we already knew their situation before COVID. And I am so happy that people drove by and got uncomfortable with people being outside. But don't forget about the people that are ringing up your groceries, the ones that are out here making ends meet, that can't get into this because we recreated a system that's already problematic. Because in the way it's set up, you have to be bottomed out to get help. That's a problem. And we just recreated the same problem that already is in existence. So I am conflicted. Do I want people outside? I do not. But do I want to give $250,000 to an inequitable Band-Aid? No, not without some assurances that in two weeks, there's going to be a turnaround that says there's something for everybody. Because what do we do with these mothers? What do we do with these families that the data already showed were in a problem circumstance? Aside from that, I have questions around what about the people who are not going to go to the hotel? For plethora of reasons, we've known for quite some time that everyone does not want to go inside. So at the end of this intervention, when we know it's going to get extremely hot or extremely cold, where's the permanent outdoor space for those folks? And where are the assurances that people are not going to be arrested while we don't have permanent outdoor space? And what is the plan for what that looks like? And I, I do want to get answers to those questions, but I just wanted to lift up the deep-seated conflict that I'm going through right now with how to handle this situation moving forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? You want to respond to that, Ms. Hooker?
Oh, I, yes, this is Gwendolyn Hooker. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I appreciate, I appreciate you lifting up the blatantly obvious. We've had this conversation amongst the partners, actually as recent as today. And we are, we are going to address that issue specifically. I believe I may have spoken to the family at the Red Roof Inn. And we will definitely get that person and her children in. We, we knew going in, as you said, that, you know, that most of the time, the people that show up in encampments are not women of color especially. And we knew that and we do, we have a contingency plan. But the first line of defense, I'll say, was to really get the people off of the property that was contaminated and getting ready to flood. And now we are intentionally looking at getting women and children or people of color into the, into the rooms. We have set aside rooms specifically for families of color, whatever that looks like. And we will, you know, address to the best of our ability, making sure that going forward, we will, you know, not only just concentrate on the encampments, but also in tandem concentrate on families who may not and are not at the encampments. We know that people, especially of color, women, we make it, we figure it out, we do whatever we need to do to make ends meet and keep our children safe. And that's why you will not see, very, very rarely where you see black children sleeping outside with their parents. That's something that you're not going to see very often. And we talked about this before we started this project. We knew that this was going to be the lay of the land, so to speak. And we are intentionally addressing it. We actually have emergency meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock to talk specifically about how we're going to address that problem specifically. I understand. And I am in total agreement, as are all of the partners, and we will intentionally address this as soon as tomorrow. Thank you so much for lifting it up.
I could just echo real quick too. Yeah, thank you for lifting that up. You know, that's something that we've been aware of in our Continuum of Care, you know, at a systemic level. You know, all these conversations that we have about, about equity and what this looks like. And, you know, realizing that this is one intervention among many. And yes, this one is very much skewed towards one demographic and we understand that. But just kind of, you know, looking at, you know, there are millions of dollars in federal and state resources that we leverage. And the COC is committed to equitable programming, right? That is something that is a foundational piece of this Continuum of Care as we move forward. And we know that the partners continue to serve across multiple areas and that they are all committed, as Gwendolyn had lifted up. So I just want to just kind of reiterate, appreciate that that was lifted up and we know that that's a problem. And we know that those are things we are addressing. And I appreciate the partners for addressing it specifically in this instance. And, you know, just that there is a commitment to equity and actually getting to some of the root causes of what that is. And looking for those, those people that are hidden, just because it's, it's not obvious. But there are, you know, people out there who are couch surfing and in cars. And, and we know that the demographics are predominantly those, those single women of color with children. We know that that's huge in our community. And we know that they're the most probably unseen, even though they make up one of the highest demographics, if not the highest demographic within homelessness. So that is definitely something that's on the forefront of the Continuum of Care, especially as we start our strategic planning, which we've just begun. So just keeping that in mind, that that is very much a primary concern for us and something that we will always continue to work toward, especially as we're talking about these interventions. So.
Thank you. This is Vice Mayor Griffin. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Anderson. I just was.
I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that was Director of Continuum Care, Sarah Jacobs, speaking. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Sorry. I wanted to thank you all for being real enough to acknowledge that. And I have had conversations about this. So I definitely appreciate that. I'm saying this to the greater community at large and, and just to anyone who has participations in these things. And I feel like I said this to city staff before. If you're in a room and you're in situations and the conversations are not, and we know the solutions aren't equitable, that's the time to lift it up. And so it's not an afterthought. We did this during COVID when we gave $2 million to businesses, even though we knew that businesses of color owned by people of color, minority-owned businesses were going to be not impacted in the same way. And we said, we'll get on it and we come right back. And afterwards, we have to stop making people afterthoughts and stop having things be after we get through one group of people. It's got to be a both and and not an either or. And I just, I need for that to be on the forefront of everyone's mind when you're in these rooms that we are not in, that I'm not in, because that's something that I'm going to be asking for and expecting from here on out. The time has to stop now. It just has to.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Director Lamb, did you?
Sure, just a couple of points, knowing that you have a full agenda. But I think a couple of topics I wanted to expand on. I think the request tonight for $250,000 is in addition to the over $2 million that the Commission approved for affordable housing for 2021. I want to start by saying that just to validate the comments that we're hearing and that this one intervention by no means is indicative of all of the solutions that we need to address the way that homelessness hits people different in our community. So certainly don't want to take away from the conversation at hand, but I did want to just expand back a little bit to say, in this year, with over $2 million committed affordable housing, we've got a portfolio of projects that runs a continuum from transitional housing intervention to multifamily construction to single-family development. In fact, the Pathway for Homes partnership that Ms. Brown spoke to, we are looking to support upwards of $750,000 to help that vision of homelessness become one of homeownership. So that, that is to say, we have so much more work to do. But I wanted just to take a moment to recognize that while we are focused very heavily tonight on one very specific intervention that we acknowledge does not touch our whole unhoused population, we are certainly trying to work on multiple fronts. I know the Commission has identified very much at the top that we want to spend more time talking on housing. And so as we prepare for a future Committee of the Whole on Housing, that will be an amazing opportunity for us to dive deeper into the work that's currently happening. And then more importantly, to get really good guidance from the Commission about along the continuum, where can the city be most impactful as a direct actor and where can we be most impactful as a connector of partners? Making sure that we are impactful, but we're also trying to cover all the angles. So I just wanted to provide that additional backdrop and certainly be happy to answer more questions and then continue the discussion at future work sessions. But I really appreciate the comments tonight.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Lamb. Are there any other questions from Commissioners? Yeah, Manager Risma?
Yeah, just to follow up on the Vice Mayor's comments, the, I believe she asked about Yeah, um, just to follow up on the Vice Mayor's comments, the, um, I believe she asked about what are we going to do with those that don't want to go into, um, sheltered housing? And, um, so we are working with our partners on a plan that would provide for a place that's safe from flooding, which is really right now the most urgent thing we can identify that might happen between now and May. And so we're not sure what that looks like at this point, but I, I want to say that we are working on that and we will give ample notice to those that are at the encampment of what that option is and, uh, continue to work with them to get them to, uh, safer ground, so to speak.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. A- any other, uh, Ms. Hooker?
Uh, I just wanted to add a couple of things. One, um, we have not stopped, um, doing direct outreach services at the encampments. We're still constantly trying to, um, make sure that we are, you know, connecting people. We're providing masks, sanitizer, uh, gift cards, phones to people that, you know, for whatever reason, they're not interested in going into the hoteling, uh, intervention. And I also wanted to go back, uh, to what Commissioner Hess asked regarding staffing. Um, we, you know, we, we, we are fully staffed, um, and but we need, we will always need, um, funding to staff the folks that are there. We're going to make sure those people get paid. But we are reallocating money to pay them. And so the, the, you know, we definitely need help. And so if there's anywhere, um, if there's an ask somewhere that maybe I'm not aware of, that you all are aware of, that are in rooms that, um, that we don't have access to for whatever reason, just remember that this is a heavy lift that, you know, three organizations are providing. Not only their, their normal staff, but also have added additional staff. Um, we definitely need as much support as we can to get this over the finish line and to make sure that we are keeping people safe and being able to provide the best wraparound services that we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gwendolyn, Gwendolyn Hooker. So any, any, yeah, uh, Sarah Jacobs?
Yeah, just real quick, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on, on what Gwendolyn had lifted up, just to kind of make sure that it's out there that, um, you know, the, that the, the funding, uh, that is being requested here will co-mingle with other pri- private philanthropic dollars from the Kalamazoo Community Foundation and the United Way, um, that have already been committed, so. And that we are currently seeking, um, to secure funding from other additional partners, too. So just wanted to lift that up.
Thank you again. Any other responses from city staff or partners or questions? Uh, yes. Director Stephanie Hoffman?
I just want to end by saying thank you guys for having us this evening. And, and this is a heavy, heavy lift, right? Um, this is heartbreaking when you see women and children not having a place to go. Uh, but we are committed to, to our entire community, specifically black and brown folk. And, uh, as we do this work, we do it with heart. We do it with the prayers and support of our churches and people who believe in people. So please, please, uh, know that we're doing this work not because we have to, we want to, and it's necessary, it's needed. And people need to know that they are loved and that they are cared for and that they are not their circumstance. And so at the end of the day, I am hoping, praying and knocking on wood and granite that you all will vote yes for this funding and we will do what we need to do uh, by any means necessary to ensure people have somewhere to say, some, something to eat and that children are safe. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much again, Director Hoffman. Any other questions? So at this point, uh, the recommended action is a motion to, to approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Cunningham, supported by Commissioner Urban. Is there further discussion? Vice Mayor Griffin, and then I'll recognize you, Commissioner Cunningham.
Um, yes, this is Vice Mayor Griffin. I wanted to know if we have a commitment from city staff with a date of concretely something that is going to be available for the greater portions of the community that are in need right now. Something definitive, I guess that's what I'm asking for.
Would you like to respond to that? Uh, DCM Lamb or?
Just to, to clarify, in terms of saying definitive, is this, this would be a, a strategy or to be able to kind of come back and report out on the 2021, uh, budget that's been approved and how those funds are currently being planned to be used?
Something with the same intentionality that imagine that all of the, the families are on toxic land because it's toxic to be unhoused and it's unsafe to not know what you're going to do with your children while Kalamazoo Public Schools are the only district not going back to school, um, in the middle of COVID. So that's what I mean. More specific than a plan, something actionable. Something actionable.
I definitely want to be responsive to the request. Um, but I, I guess what I, what I can start with is coming back and having staff and myself report out on what our, our current plans were that we discussed kind of leading up to the 2021 budget. Uh, the dollars that were approved by commission, we can talk about what we, what the pathway that we're on and, and how that's, that's being envisioned. I think to the extent that we're looking at a change in what was approved, certainly we can have that conversation if, uh, we want to go into a different direction, we can do that. We can also talk about, um, the opportunities that we even lifted up this past Saturday in terms of future discussion. I want to be really responsive, but in terms of, uh, you know, specific interventions, what I would start with is where we've got funds currently allocated. Uh, and then certainly it would be up to the commission's purview to look at making adjustments, um, in, you know, to your, to your satisfaction.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get clarity. Uh, again, we can't pick and choose when we want to be equitable. And so we know giving this $250,000 is an absolutely important, necessary intervention that needs to happen. I'm totally supportive of it, but we know it's not equitable. So behind that, what will make me feel comfortable? So we're not picking and choosing when equity, when we want to, you know, utilize that. What is something definitive, a timeframe that we know that is going to come back to us, that's going to be accessible for the people that we already knew were in crisis?
So certainly we can put together a timeline for, for funds and project completion. Um, we will start there and certainly this will be part of a discussion. If we're not bringing back what you're looking for, we'll continue to refine it. Uh, but I do look forward to discussions to make sure that we are getting, um, the, the, you know, the full, the full vision of the commission amongst the continuum of how we want to use our resources in the most impactful ways. Um, certainly we want to continue to keep equity at the forefront. In terms of interventions, looking at immediate interim all the way to long term, we can talk about our interventions currently. We can talk about our bricks and mortar construction for multifamily. We can talk about our support for pathways of home, working with open doors and how we look at a pathway for homelessness homeownership. So we can put each of those projects to a timeline. Um, and then certainly if there's desire to do more, uh, or go into greater detail, we absolutely would love it and welcome a conversation from there.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Um, I just wanted to double down and say thank you to all of the organizations willing to step up, but I wanted to name names, which I rarely do in instances specifically to Stephanie Hoffman. Um, your leadership in this space, uh, I, I can't put into context or words, uh, in regards to my appreciation. So I just wanted to give you that specific thank you. Um, and then to, uh, our Vice Mayor's point, um, you know, I think that her, her frustrations is also indicative of the principle that this issue is bigger than the city administration's ability to, to answer alone. Um, one, two, um, within her statement, one of my biggest frustrations is more on a state and federal level uh, that really restricts us from specifically naming names and or, uh, demographics, uh, that we would like to assist. And, um, so I say that coded to my, uh, our community partners to say, you know, you have to fill in the gap for us in a lot of these instances. Especially when we come to the table with the ability to try and support our community at large. We know that certain entities, certain bodies, certain demographics, certain people fall through the cracks with, um, not with, you know, I guess, uh, not that we have ill intent, but it, it's just the nature of the system. Uh, and so we can't fight the system alone. We need, uh, our community to assist us with that process. So, um, I just wanted to highlight my frustrations there and then also, uh, highlight that, um, it's not really a battle we can handle alone, but it's a team effort. So I appreciate all of those who are willing to step up. Um, and the leaders and even the frontline workers because we need everybody involved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. Other discussion on the motion? Seeing no one, Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next is item H2. Manager Ritzma?
Adoption of an ordinance as an emergency measure to amend Chapter 12 of the Kalamazoo City Code to set forth emergency manager, management protocols and permit the city commission and other public bodies of the city, which are subject to the Open Meetings Act, to continue to meet by electronic means.
Manager Ritzma, is there a staff report on this item?
Uh, Your Honor, we, we had discussion at the Committee of the Hall around this. I know, uh, Deputy City Attorney Cherry's available, myself to, uh, answer any questions.
Commissioners, are there questions, additional questions for staff that did not get answered during our Committee of the Hall meeting? Or you'd like to bring up again now? I'm not seeing any question, Commissioner Pradel?
Yeah, I'll just ask a question for people who might have caught the Cal meeting. Uh, in terms of, you know, if, effectively if we don't vote on this tonight, this is our last chance before the April, uh, first meeting in April. So, uh, just to clarify, if we don't act tonight, we will be back in person, uh, in April barring, you know, some intervention by the, the state legislature, correct?
That, uh, Deputy City Attorney Richard Cherry, um, that is correct, Commissioner Pradel. Uh, and you have to keep in mind as of, uh, April 19, 2021, you're still under the gathering, uh, and face order, uh, by the state. So, uh, and that does not end until, like I said, April 19, 2021 at 11:59 PM. So you would have effectively two meetings where, uh, you would have to, uh, figure out in the month of April, um, to, to, if it were going to be, uh, how to, how to figure that out, how to, uh, make them, uh, accessible to everyone.
And to clarify, I think we, this was brought up before at the Cal meeting as well, but based on the square footage of the city hall chambers, effectively we would be permitted to have 25 people in city chambers, including city staff and city commissioners at any given time, if I understand correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I've seen none. The motion is to adopt the ordinance as an emergency measure. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Urban?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Knott? Discussion? Seeing no, uh, Commissioner Pradel?
Yeah, I'll give the abbreviated clip notes. Um, if, if you want to hear my full thoughts that I feel pretty strongly about, I encourage you to go back and, and check out our Cal meeting, but just want to emphasize, you know, you hear a number of people saying, well, look at all these other municipalities that are going back in person. Uh, you know, you hear a number of people say, well, let's go into hybrid formats. You know, a number of people who say that there are people who are disenfranchised by not having in-person meetings. But I guess what I would want to emphasize to everybody again is don't forget those individuals who may otherwise not show up because of fear of, of COVID or catching COVID. Or, you know, imagine a scenario where, uh, we have four or 500 people like who showed up in, in February 2020 at City Hall. What are you going to say to the 375 other people who can't fit into commission chambers? Who show up to express their views and share their, lend their voice? Uh, what's going to happen to those people? Uh, for the people who say, well, let's just go get under a big, you know, circus tent outside in one of our parks. Um, how do we feel that community participation is going to be when there is a, you know, a spring lightning storm or a heavy rainfall, or we place it in a park that might not be accessible to a bus line from another section of town? So, you know, every decision that we make, uh, during an imperfect pandemic is going to exclude, uh, people from, uh, this process. And, you know, I shared this during our Committee of the Hall meeting, but, you know, for me personally, during this process, uh, that we all agree is less than ideal. Um, none of us want to be behind a screen. But the, the level of participation has been at unprecedented levels, uh, since the pandemic has started. I mean, in, in terms of, you know, meetings where we had to split into two meetings because we had so many people call and make public comments. And, you know, the thing is, is we don't know the circumstances that we all face in our personal lives as commissioners, as the city staff that we ask to show up and serve us, uh, during these meetings. Uh, the traumas that people have who've lost close loved ones. Uh, and effectively, if we go back in person, we're asking all those people to, uh, maybe do something that they don't feel comfortable doing. And we're asking the public who might not feel comfortable coming and expressing, uh, their views that they feel are important. So, you know, I think, uh, personally, you know, I'm, I'm very supportive of this and extending as long as we're, we're able to, uh, until we feel confident that it's safe to, to return in person.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other discussion? Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. The ordinance is adopted. Next is item H3. City Manager Ritzma?
Adoption of a resolution declaring a local emergency due to the COVID-19 epidemic and permit the city commission and all other city of K- Kalamazoo public bodies to continue to meet by electronic means after March 30, 2021 through August 31, 2021.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a report on this item?
Uh, no, there isn't. Your Honor, this was also discussed at our Committee of the Hall meeting.
Commissioners, are there questions for staff at this time? Thank you. Uh, seeing no questions, the recommended motion is, uh, action is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Knott?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Cunningham. Discussion? I, I do, I, I guess before I ask Clerk Borling to call the roll on this, I just want to remind folks that, you know, that we have adjusted our meeting schedule to include a Committee of the Hall meeting that occurs, uh, on the Monday before our regular business meeting. It starts at five o'clock. That's going to make some things a little more complicated, I, here I suppose, but we did have a long discussion about these topics at our Committee of the Hall meeting, which is also recorded in public and available to, to, uh, watch and participate in to the, to some extent in real time or to, or to watch afterwards. So there was a long discussion about this item. Uh, Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. The resolution is adopted. Next, our reports in legislation. City Manager Ritzma, do you have a report?
Yeah, I would like to just update along the lines of COVID and working in the office. So as So as you all can see, we're, many of us or all of us are working from home and have been since last. Spring when COVID began. What we're doing and the reason why we're doing that is there is a Michigan. Occupational safety OSHA, whatever OSHA stands for, my OSHA. Rule that if you can work from home, you must work from home. It's. Create safety in the workplace for those that can't work from home. So we've been following that. That is set to expire April fifteenth. There is indication at the state level that that will be extended for another six months. And the governor did create a work group around return to the office and. I believe that work group is going to be looking at. How do we transition from work from home to the office, you know, over the next six months? So. Just wanted to give you all an update on that and the, and the community that. We're doing this out of the abundance of safety for our, for our employees and the public.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. So now is the time on our agenda for Commissioners who want to make comments. Commissioner Urban.
Yes, I'd like to. Acknowledge. That I appreciate Commissioner Griffin's candor and forthrightness in pointing out that even though we're doing. What we think are great things, it's not good enough. It's so welcome to have people amongst us who can speak up so forcefully and with such. Conviction. To bring to the attention of people like me stuff that we need to know. I really appreciate that. She's. Very. Disappointed to hear that it's not accurate, but then on the other hand, I'm not surprised. And I certainly hope that we can. Going forward with the kind of attention that Patrice and others are giving to this, that finally, finally. We are going to actually start to deliver on what we mean by diversity, equity and inclusion. We have a long way to go. When I wear, if I wear American flag lapel pin, it's for what we aspire to, not what we are. So. Thanks to Patrice. I also appreciate Laura's measured response. I think a key thing here going forward to, to. To be. Rigorous about delivering on equity, that we do all we can to get. Really good data on the situation at the present moment so that we can document. What changes happen going forward. As long as we're just doing, dealing with anecdotal stories and. And information from here and there, it's always going to be questioned by somebody or other. So I hope that in the course of what we are doing going forward, that the city staff and the, all the. Non-governmental agencies that are working on this can mainly through continuum of care. Develop a database that can be made public that everybody agrees to is the most. Fair and honest representation of the situation as it is and as it evolves. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. Commissioner Cunningham.
I just wanted to highlight again the hundred year celebration for Mount Zion. They have been a pillar in African-American community as being a child who was raised in the church. You know, I spent many years of my life. You know, in that space with them or endorsing the impact that they've had in our community. And it's always been major. One thing that wasn't highlighted. In their resolution was. Proclamation was the, the work that they do at Western Michigan University. There have been so many individuals who have come through the college who has, you know, found that place as a church home. And it has allowed them to develop who they are in a lot of different ways. So once again, I just want to take time out to accentuate that and highlight that. That I am appreciative of the work that they do in this community. Also wanted to highlight that St. Patty's Day is coming up on Wednesday. So if you do not partake, please stay off the road. If you do partake, please be safe. Let's have fun, but let's do it respectfully. We are still dealing with pandemic conditions. And we want to be mindful of that as a community so that we take care of one another as best as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Knott?
Yes, thank you. This is Erin Knott. You know, we had a caller earlier tonight talking about litter and I empathize with her as. This is the time of year when the snow melts and, you know, you see what's been left behind. It's been ridiculously windy today and. I've gone out a couple of times and picked up, you know, litter that's not mine, that's just been blowing into my yard and collecting along the fence line. You know, living near the North Side neighborhood, I walk my dogs around here. I recognize that some neighborhoods are impacted more than others. So. I guess a question for city staff to follow up on later. For, for lots that are vacant, you know, that are just. There was a house that's been gone now for some time. What is our enforcement process or how do we aid neighbors in that litter collection? This is not a new time that a caller has reached out to us. Back when we were meeting in person. We heard from folks from the Arcadia neighborhood on a regular basis, as well as. East Side, Edison and North Side about, you know, just the, the challenge of litter being left behind. So just. Wondering if there are ways in which that the city, in addition to the street sweepers can help out. Again, this is that ugly time of year as we watch the snow melt and all the leave behinds. I think the other thing I'll lift up is during the committee of the whole earlier this evening. Director Baker made a statement, something about lead lines, lead service lines, they got to go. And much to my surprise, the city came onto my street just less than a week ago. And canvassed and left a little leave behind. When I bought my house fifteen years ago, the inspector said I had a galvanized. Main and that is not the case. So tomorrow I am getting my lead line replaced and I want to give a shout out to Sean and his team. At Public Works. They've been pretty awesome to work with as they've prepped me for the undertaking that's going to happen tomorrow. They showed up with a health questionnaire, walked me through the process. I've had a couple of neighbors reached out. That have been skeptical about having the city come in and I've assured them based on my experience as well as the assurances that Sean and his team have made that. They will come in, they will be masked. It's just been top-notch professionals. So. Just a shout out to Director Baker and the, and the team and I look forward to. Being done with this process tomorrow at some point. So that's all. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Commissioner Knott. Commissioner Pradel.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Pradel here. I've been, I've been pondering whether to say it or not because sometimes you introduce us before we speak. So I, I kind of evaluate that. So Vice Mayor, I don't want you to think I'm not. Doing my part as well to try to be more inclusive with our work. You know, Vice Mayor, I've got three little, little guys here in the house tonight. And one of them's sleeping upstairs and two other ones are probably getting to bed right now. But the one thing that they all have in common is they all look like me, right? And, you know, one of my great hopes is that, you know, my boys get to hear and listen to people. Who are fierce advocates like you. Who champion issues that I might not think of so that. They grow up in a city. Hopefully they want to stick around here, but hopefully. They grow up in a city that's far more equitable because of the work that we do and because of the work that you lived up. And my hope is, is that they are much more thoughtful and. Cognizant than I am even as a person and a leader in the community. So thank you for continuing to speak up and. And I will continue to do my best to be the best ally possible to the work that we're trying to achieve. We buried in the consent agenda tonight, we had a forty year agreement that we. Bound ourselves into with neighboring townships. Which, you know, being in the consent agenda, you might think is a not important step forward. But I encourage you, if you, if you haven't had a chance to, to watch back at our committee of the whole meeting tonight at five o'clock because we heard a great presentation from. City staff and we also had an opportunity to ask a number of questions to help the public understand that. And the importance of why that's so important to our community. So I encourage people to do that. You heard us talk tonight about the virtual meeting extension and. Think hopefully you know how I feel about that at this point, but. You know, I want to encourage people, please to reach out to your elected officials, even if you don't live. In the city of Kalamazoo or your elected official does not live within the confines of the city of Kalamazoo because they. Hold a large key to the path forward. And I know for me personally, it was very frustrating because I. Did not miss a single city commission meeting in two thousand nineteen as a candidate for city commission. And I would have not missed a single city commission meeting leading up to this point, had it not been to the fact that. We were waiting on the legislature to extend before. And we waited till the last hour and then we canceled our meeting and then rescheduled for a date that was not on the calendar. That I was at a family funeral. So, you know, it is very important that our legislator take, legislature take. So that municipalities like us do not have uncertainty and, you know, a difficult time navigating. This does not have to be complicated. Local municipalities should not be having to piecemeal solutions together to figure out a path forward. And then we shouldn't be the lame duck out. When other municipalities are finding hybrids or in person, and in my opinion, being somebody responsible. We shouldn't have to be stick our necks out to come up with solutions and we need. Our state to take the first step forward in the lead to help us through this crisis. So please reach out to your elected officials. I know we have some, some great allies here in our delegation. When you grew up in school, you might remember the lessons of displacement, right? So. We're in school and they would show two containers, right? And it had one glass full of water. And it would maybe be half full and they would have another glass and they would take and they would pour it in. And then they would fill it up and you would see that it would, you know, maybe not fill all the way up and pour all the way out. And then there'd be another glass that was filled with like rocks or dirt or something like that. And then they would take and. They would pour the water in and you would learn about displacement, right? That. That when there's an object displacing that water, it's going to come out of the glass. Well. You heard us bring up the issue about. The dam, the Morrow Dam and basically the sediment buildup in the Kalamazoo River. And you may have seen some articles recently about this, but. The reason I'm bringing up this example that we probably worked on in third grade in school. Is because there was a recent report that was conducted that showed that there are six, are three hundred and sixty nine thousand cubic yards of sediment. Which is equivalent to thirty six thousand nine hundred fully loaded dump trucks. Or it's equivalent to basically like a foot of sediment at the base of the river. That would continue twelve point five miles in length down the river. Now, we're pretty lucky this year in the fact that our water levels are lower than usual. You know, you may have heard reports that like Lake Michigan is. Between inches to a foot lower in water levels than it's been in previous years. That's definitely working in our favor. But if we ended up in a situation like two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen where we saw record level floods. That sediment at the bottom could potentially face a significant hazard. To especially areas in the floodplain in the city of Kalamazoo. And so any people who are thinking to themselves, this is just the Kalamazoo River. You know, it's this polluted, dirty river, you know, that I don't really have to interact with much that just flows through our community. I encourage you to advocate for the remediation of that sediment. Because we don't know what tomorrow holds in terms of water levels and it could have significant impacts on predominantly. Low-income neighborhoods and homeowners, people of color. And, you know, you talk about the encapment of, in, along the river as well. I mean, they would be, you know, zone zero of in terms of impact if we had had a significant flood incident this year. And so, you know, I just want to lift that up as well and remind people that that's still an issue. I know that the dam owner is taking steps to remediate the sediment and they're starting in Winkie Park in Comstock. I was really pleased to be able to work with some other of our area municipalities. Kalamazoo Township, Comstock Township, Kalamazoo County, they all joined us and formally sending letters to the company. Comstock was the most recent one to sign a letter and send it into the company as well. But this is a significant issue, whether we realize it or not, it's underneath our nose. And, you know, we, we don't know how it will shake out. I hope it will shake out better than we think, but I wanted to make sure to lift that up. And if you want to stay up to date on. The progress and steps of that, I encourage you to visit the Kalamazoo River Alliance on Facebook, an organization that's working to advocate for that. So. For that, thank you very much to everybody who was part of the meeting tonight and have a great evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Hess.
Want to begin by saying, I, again, beginning with the committee of the whole has been extremely rich. I don't know if it was enhanced by our increased opportunity to. Interact on, in a retreat and a training on Friday and Saturday, but it really has. So. Thank you to fellow commissioners, vice mayor and mayor and city staff. For the richness of this evening. It says, what I take away is collaboration on several, on several fronts, the collaboration with. All of our partners in housing and, and our city staff who are working diligently. To, to. Both to use our current resources, but then also as we looked. We want to collaborate with the county in using the, the Homes for All Village that's coming along. And also the COVID relief package that is coming to the city of Kalamazoo. So. There's, there are going to be a lot of opportunities to collaborate and work together. With all of the equity in mind. And for me, that's, that's where hope lives. A few other things, kudos to the Kalamazoo Youth Development Network. Who's doing significant work for planning for summer for the youth of Kalamazoo as they may leave a. Educational opportunity in school, but they just continue to their education through summer planning. Programs with our youth, one that is particularly important to me and new to Kalamazoo is called the First T. And it's teaching youth seven to seventeen core values, nine core values through the game of golf. And these are, we're reaching out again to core neighborhoods and folks who normally wouldn't have access to this game. It's, and programs are beginning in April, in the spring and they are five dollars for six week sessions. You can reach out at firsttwestmichigan.org and find out about those programs or reach out to me at the city. I'm happy to put you in touch. Those programs are offered at Red Arrow Golf Course. And as, also as an ex officio member of the Environmental Concerns Committee of the city. I have good news in that, and it was announced on Facebook and it's going to come through your view from the curb, I believe. That we are going to begin to recycle styrofoam in Kalamazoo. So start saving your number six styrofoam on April twenty fourth, Saturday, April twenty fourth at Mayor's Riverfront Park. We will from ten to one be collecting all of your number six styrofoam. Maybe that's part of the litter. There, there will be four collections and this is a trial year for us. So hopefully we can band together and make sure that this happens on a regular basis. It's going to be the last Saturday in April, July, October and January. So we're very excited about that. The city's Facebook page, if you look up EPS foam recycling, there's, there's information on there. About a mural. A proposal. So the, this is a semi trailer that needs to be decorated and we are asking for proposals. To create a beautiful mural on that, on that semi. So, so. Environmental concerns and collaboration concerns. Vice Mayor Griffin, thank you for your voice. Thank you for speaking for women. Thank you for speaking for women of color. We will all do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Vice Mayor Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. This is Vice Mayor Griffin here. I want to start by saying hi, Seamus. We have an amazing young person who watches us regularly. Thank you to Commissioner Erin Knott for letting us know. So I want to make sure I say hi to Seamus. Thank you for watching us. It is awesome that you do and please continue, please continue to do so. Anytime we can have young people watching, it's amazing. I wasn't that in tune with local government as a young person. So. I wanted to start off, start off with that. And then. I want to, thank you, Commissioner Urban, Commissioner Hess and Commissioner Pradel for your comments. I do appreciate that. I do want to say along those lines, you know, housing insecurity, instability, it's not something that rests. And resides at the city of Kalamazoo, right? And even though, you know. I sit in, in service of the city of Kalamazoo, I care about our entire community. So my greater ask is for. Everyone in the county of Kalamazoo electeds and. and, and everyone who is in a position of authority or power to please come together to create solutions to some of these issues, specifically the people who are outdoors, creating an outdoor space for camping. The city is landlocked, so perhaps we need some of our partners outside of the city to help with those solutions. So I'm definitely asking for that. I know the city definitely does step up and is stepping up even more than they have previously. But we definitely need our partners in this work. I want to thank city staff again and all of my Commissioners for the retreat Saturday. I realize it was another day added to our very busy schedules, but you took the chance and I really appreciate it. I think our community will be better for it. I think we'll be better for it, and it's just the first step in that direction. So thank you very much, and that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Griffin. So just to close this out here, just a few things, and then I wanted to make a little bit bigger presentation on something here at the end of that. So first of all, thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor Griffin. That's something I've, exactly, things that I have said in continuum care meetings more times than I can count. So I guess I'm sorry we have to keep saying that. As far as litter, I'm all about that. I'm on with this litter thing. I've been getting emails and I don't know if people know this or not, but literally year-round, every single early Sunday morning, there are a few blocks in the city of Kalamazoo that I walk. I call it my my meditation walk that I do first thing on Sunday mornings and, and clean up some streets and pick up litter. And I think, I guess if it, if one thing gets to me, it's a message about how we care about this city. And I think we can do a better job along those lines. And I, I encourage any community response related to picking up our own streets and doing that work. And sure, you know, we're going to get our, going to get our street sweepers out there soon, but that doesn't take care of these empty lots and our curb lawns and that sort of stuff. So I agree a hundred percent. You know, we're, we're going to kind of blow through something here tonight, because of our comment, our consent agenda. But we just passed a, what I will call a groundbreaking resolution to creating a contract, a water contract with our regional partners, our townships and the city. And we, we approved that tonight. And this most recent iterate, iter- iteration of that process, which has been, you know, many lawsuits over the course of time, started seven years ago, almost to the day. And we now have approved contracts. So thank you township partners. Thank you city staff. This represents a vast commitment of financial and human capital to get us to this point. So what I'm going to say is it's a great first step. It probably represents what ultimately these kinds of relationships are, where everybody doesn't got everything, doesn't get everything they want. But we have reached a point where we're comfortable recognizing that we are a regional water system still controlled by the city of Kalamazoo, but that we are going to work together and we're going to have more discussions about regional agreements going forward, like Vice Mayor talked about. And addressing housing issues is just going to be one of those. So it's an important night tonight. We need to recognize that. This is not the kind of thing often that people run on or have campaigns about, but it represents vast amounts of effort and energy to get to this point, and it is so, so important. So I just really appreciate that. And then the thing I want to close out with this, and this gets somewhat, I'd say to, to some of the comments made by Vice Mayor Griffin tonight as well. Except I, I do these Zoom meetings from my work office. And in my department here, Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, this is not work we can do from home. So we've been coming to work every single day for a year now. We can't do this from any other place. And in addition, I have not been able to find a nicer backdrop than the double-sliding doors that are behind me here in my work office. And so it just seems like this is the best place I have to be. I don't think anything beats this. I still threaten to, you know, slide those doors apart and come out as we start the meeting, except for the fact that 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 closet is filled with stacks of paperwork, and I can't get in there right now. But here at the office, it has been a little bit like a Jerry Lewis telethon tonight, because my staff have been in here occupying desks and phones. And these are people that have other, you know, daytime responsibilities, but it's because of this. And that is that we have about seventeen million dollars of COVID emergency rental assistance known as CERA, C-E-R-A, that has come here to Kalamazoo County that needs to be distributed by the end of this calendar year. And we are partnering with our, our Housing Assessment and Resource Agency, Housing Resources Incorporated, and Open Doors. And we've split up those funds, and those funds, we are going to get in the hands of people that need them. We're talking about families. We're talking about single people. We're talking about all across the board. And these funds are specifically target, targeted to help people with back rent, unpaid utilities, including water and sewer bills, gas and electric, bills to help people stay connected to the internet, so that their children can participate in school. And I'm just putting it out there right now. We went through every single application that we had tonight. And we're going to be keeping doing that till we get that seventeen million dollars committed here in Kalamazoo County. The doorway for these funds is getting in touch with Housing Resources Incorporated. And that first step is making that phone call. It's our area code two-six-nine, but it's three-eight-two-oh-two-eight-seven. And I would like to hear that that phone number has been flooded, because if we can get this seventeen million committed and out the door to keep people in their housing and to pay those bills, well, there's a possibility we could get some more money. And I believe that our community can do a good job of getting this out. We could possibly get some more money that could go through March of twenty-two. So spread this around, everybody, that these funds are available. They need to be spent. Three-eight-two-oh-two-eight-seven. You don't like Jerry Lewis now. Three-eight-two-oh-two-eight-seven. Let people know that this is the number you can call if you have issues related to back rent. You may have some issues in terms of not being employed and wondering whether you're going to pay your, your rent here for the next few months and help with that. Utilities, we can take care of that as well, and internet. So please call in. Open Doors, HRI, here at Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, we're working together to make sure people can take advantage of this resource. So let's do that, and let's get the work done. Let's keep our hearts open. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.